Let the record show that it's five minutes after six. I'll call to order the regular Durant City Council meeting of October the 10th of 2017. Call upon our good friend, James Dalton, if you would, to lead us in our vacation, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the day, the beauty of the day, the coolness of the air. We thank you for our health. Thank you for the breath of life that you give us. We thank you for the freedom that we have in our country. For we just pray tonight, as we come to do the city's business, that you be with us, Father, that you lead and guide those who receive. Pray for wise decisions, Father. For we just thank you for every good thing that you give us. And pray for those who have recently had tragedies, whether it be from a natural disaster or man-made perils to back, Father, we lift all those families up to you tonight. We pray that you heal them in only a way that you can, Father. We thank you for every good thing you give us, Jesus.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, James. If you will, please stand for our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here this evening. We'll get right to our agenda items and our agenda business items. And under the first order of business, that's why we have city clerks. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Here.
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 Vice Mayor Higginson.
Here.
Mayor Tomlinson.
Here.
All council persons are present, and we have a full quorum. Thank you all for being here again. Now we'll continue with our agenda items. Under item number one, we have presentations of our proclamation and employee service awards. And I'm going to invite all the council members, if they would, to come down front. And also, I'm going to invite Ms. Eileen, said it right, didn't I?
To come forward for the proclamation presentation.
I'm going to let this young lady introduce herself to you, but she's involved with our Crisis Center, Women's Crisis Center. Her own mother has been the director of that for probably close to 20, 30 years, since its very beginning. And every year, we participate in the October, the month of October, the Domestic Violence and Abuse Month, and have a candle lighting ceremony that they put on at Market Square, and have many, many, many folks participate in that. And I've had the honor, for about 17 of those years, to present the city's proclamation. And as we say every year, our hope and prayer is that someday we all have to have a Domestic Violence Month in our country and in our state. But I want to read our proclamation declaring the month of October as the Domestic Violence and Abuse Month for the city of Durant. And then I'm going to ask Ms. Eileen to say a few words when I get through here. As you know, I like to read our proclamations because they make a statement about the why and what it's about. So bear with me here. Whereas violence against women and children continues to become more prevalent as a social problem caused by the imbalance of power due to gender and age, and whereas Oklahoma is ranked in the top 10 nationally for women killed by men in single victim, single offender homicides, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, and whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting women and their children and society as a whole, and whereas battered women have been on the forefront in efforts to bring peace and equality to the home, and whereas the city of Durant strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners, and every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent domestic violence. It's time for all of us to start conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for all. Now therefore, Jerry L. Tomlinson, Mayor of the city of Durant, hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Durant, and urge all our citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. Eileen, thank you for what you do and your staff.
I'd just like to thank the community, the law enforcement, schools, just individuals that support our company. We work hard to try to bring awareness to the community, and that's definitely always a daily challenge, is bringing awareness. People don't realize what we do, but we basically are there for victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, and we offer services to them as residents of our shelter. We have a 14-bed shelter, and then we also offer non-residential services to them. And we would do anything from be at the hospital to go to court with them. And there's a lot of people out there that don't realize exactly what we do as advocates, and we do those things. We help them through their court processes. We help them in the shelter and get back on their feet if they need to, get jobs, get home placement, and work with them and their children. So again, I'd like to just bring awareness to you guys that we are a 24-hour facility, that we do have staff on hand 24 hours, and would just like to bring awareness to the community of what we do. And everything that we do is free of charge to our clients. And so obviously, we work through grants, through state and federal grants, and then through private donations and area businesses. And we've recently had the opportunity to build a pretty sizable playground at our facility through the help of several local businesses. And I'd like to extend a thank you to those businesses such as CMC Steel Plant, Lowe's, Advance America, and it's just been really a good deal for us to get this playground together because we've not ever had anything at the facility for the children. So that's one of the newest things we've done most recently. I would like to throw out our phone number. It's easy to remember. I like to tell it because what do you guys think of when you hear 30-30? The men out here should never forget that phone number, 5-0-924-3030. So please feel free to come by, visit us. We're always in need of volunteers, and thank you again for bringing awareness. Thank you.
Okay, the next, item number two on the agenda is to the presentation of our employee service awards. And we're in our third quarter. So we'll be doing this one more time this year, I believe. And it's an opportunity for council, for the city of Durant, to take a minute and recognize our great employees. And I mean that sincerely, for their dedicated service to our city. And we recognize five years, 10 years, 20 years, and 25 years this evening, representing 135 total years of service to the city of Durant by the employees that we're going to be bringing up here this evening. Some of them I've known since they were kids, so I don't know whether I feel older or whether they're still kids. But I'm looking at one of them right back there right now. But it's a real honor and pleasure to witness this personally, and for council to take the time, the city manager, and the city clerk, and the city staff to recognize the employees that work all over the place, from the sanitation department to the fire department, police department, the library. We even have our municipal judge we're going to recognize this evening. So all employees have an opportunity to be recognized at some time or the other for their service to the city and to the citizens of Durant. So we're going to start with the five-year service awards first. And as a five-year recipient, they receive a certificate, a lapel pin, and a check for $50. And this first one I have known since he was a kid, with the fire department and five years of service, Brandon Brooks. Brandon, come on up here.
Congratulations, young man. Come over here so we can...
Two rows.
Keep going, where do I need to go? I feel like I'm just floating around here.
Congratulations, Brandon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a rookie.
Also a pleasure to present this to the lady that says, "Shh." Robbie Tonnaby, our library director, for five years. Robbie, come on up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Calvin Peterson here this evening with our street department. Calvin is here. Five years with our street department. Great job, Calvin. and a pin, and a check for $100. And this lady has been responsible for our grant writing for these 10 years, and we've been quite successful, and she does a really good job for us. Becca Collins. Becca, congratulations.
Royce? Royce here?
Royce could not be here. Chief, if you'll come up, you will be sure he gets that check, right? Okay.
Want to get a picture with the chief?
Of course.
Birthday boy, thank you.
I can't resist it. Here comes the judge. 10 years' service. Thank you, Judge. Come on up. Ken Rainbow.
I might add that the judge brought really some new ideas when he came on board. We've been really pleased with the judge's service. And anyway, Judge, I know the lady lives there.
She said she wanted the check.
Want to get her picture up here? Come on up.
As she mumbles about you under her breath.
Should've said something earlier. If there's family members in the audience, come up with them, okay? Get your picture.
Well, she started this when I first came on board.
It's been a pleasure working with you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman.
I know we've already taken pictures, but does anybody want a family member? Want to take a picture with a family member? She's a... I think she's already threatened me over there, but Dan can get one later if you like. Okay, now we move to 20 years. We have Andy Navid, Captain Andy Navid, with the police department. Is Andy here? There he is. 20 years. And I failed to mention, the 20-year recipients receive a plaque, a certificate, a pin, and a check for $250. I'm sorry, $200. Andy, that's $200, not $250. I know this guy's here, you can't miss him. We had to make the doors wider, and I think the truck's bigger. Our good friend and 20-year servant to the city and the fire department, John Viata. Come up here, John.
Oh, I've got some family, too. My mama, my wife, my baby boy. Come here.
We were trying to thank you.
I can see two of you back there.
I'm hiding behind you.
You'll be swatting down.
Right here. There we go. One more.
And we move to 25 years now, and they receive a plaque, a certificate, a pin, and the check for $250. And in our fire department, again, another young man that's still a kid to me, and we're proud of him, Stacy Bennett with the fire department. Come on up. Come on up, Mom and Dad. Come on up. Benny and Mom.
I'll sit over here.
And here's another one that I hate to keep even saying this, but I knew probably beginning around the age of 13 or 14, somewhere in there, with our police department, one of our finest detectives, Ben Vinstra. Ben, come on up here. I might add newly married Ben Vinstra and Mrs.
She's quite a hunter, too.
Congratulations.
Who's this young man? Carson?
Can you come in a little bit? Look right here, smile.
Again, I know I can speak for the council on this, and the city manager, too, but we certainly appreciate all the employees, as we mentioned earlier, all departments, again, from here at city hall to the fields of the fires and the accidents on the road and stuff like that. They all do a wonderful job for you, the citizens of our great community. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you for being here. If anybody wanted an extra photo, Dan, holler at Dan here. So anyway, we're going to go back up so we can take care of the rest of the agenda. Okay, we'll continue on with our agenda items, but I might just make a comment before we get started on our regular agenda items. Last evening, council met here at the city hall for a little over two hours, I think, but we met with the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. They are our insurance carrier, both liability, property and casualty, and have been our carrier, I think, for some 15-odd years, and are the number-one carrier for municipalities in our state. But we had the opportunity to go through some training, elected official training, and we appreciated those folks coming down to do that. We also had the opportunity to review our own declarations page referencing our insurance coverages. And we also had the opportunity and took action to adopt a best practices handbook for Oklahoma municipalities. And we also approved and authorized a resolution, number 2017-23, that authorized the city to participate in the O-MAG recognition program. By participating in this, and I want to thank city staff, and I want to thank city manager, but if I could add a little extra thanks to Cindy Price for her time and effort in helping get all the council members together, and also organizing this meeting, and helping us get it all arranged with the O-MAG folks. But as a result of that, O-MAG also recognizes the cities that do participate, and we are one of a handful, and they presented the city of Durant last night a check for $10,000. So yeah, woo-hoo. So that'll be put to good use by the city administration and staff. So I want to thank the council members for that opportunity and being away from home and family and the twins and, I think, a one-year-old and a... A lot of kids. Okay, he said it, not me. Anyway, thank everyone for taking the time and was certainly a good time well spent We will pick up on our regular agenda, if you're following along, on number two, and that is the consent items. We have items 2A through I. Are there any to be removed for consideration under item number three? James, would you like to comment on your emergency management grant? Because I'll pull that one if you do. Okay? I'd like to pull item number I for a discussion. Are there any others? Hearing none, consider a motion to approve the consent docket.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Higginson.
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson.
Aye. Takes us to item number three, and that would be 3I. Consider acceptance of the 2018 Emergency Management Performance Grant. James, just enlighten us in the audience on what that's about.
Yes, sir. This is a grant that we apply for each year. We've gotten for numerous years. The initial award this year is for $40,000. That's $10,000 per quarter. We are required to do certain projects and to earn that money, basically. It's 100% grant to us. It doesn't, we don't have to match it with anything other than our regular budget that we have. The other good thing about this particular grant is that if we find a special need project, something that we're deficient within the city, something that would help us, we can look a lot of times to these EMPG, Emergency Management Performance Grants, and sometimes we'll get those as well. Some of the things we get, we got a refueling trailer, about $7,000. The fire rescue, swift water rescue, training in boat was $25,000, came off of this grant. And we try to share that money where it needs to be used the most to make us a more resilient community. So it's a really good opportunity for us, and we appreciate you all supporting us in that.
Well, thank you, James, and thank you for all that you do. And I know you've heard it before from the council, but we do appreciate the time that you spent and your staff in our emergency management. our emergency management operation and making it really, we consider, the number-one operation in the state. But thank you for that and what you do with earning and achieving the grant, the performance grant.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Thank you, council. And Chad, spare time, he's volunteered to be a storm spotter, so.
Entertain a motion for 3I.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Okay, that takes us to item number four, 4A, and we've been advised that 4A requires no action this evening.
I would like to say something, Mayor, if I could, though, on that.
In reference to 4A?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. I wanted to recognize the Durant Trails and Open Space Organization, along with some other community partners, who are working diligently to raise the money for the match requirement on our Rails to Trails project, and we are not ready to accept those funds because I'm waiting on something from Department of Transportation, but I believe that Lisa is here, is Derek as well?
Derek.
Okay. And you've raised about, what, $24,000? $24,000 and some change towards our $99,000 match. So, I just wanted to recognize them and all their efforts. Thank you.
Well-recognized, and thank you for your hard work. Hi, Whitney. Okay, so, we're ready to go to 4B?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that, Becca. Item 4B, 2017 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Small Cities Grant Award 17031, CDBG 17, for Market Square Improvements, C-2017-65.
Okay. This is a grant that's going to benefit our entire community. It is to make improvements to Market Square, which will include new ADA restrooms, some additional lighting and electrical accessibility, along with some pavilions for events and some parking and crosswalks and some seating. So, we are very excited about this, and there were a lot of people that helped make this a reality, some things that we had to complete through the grant process, so I'm just asking for the council to accept the grant.
Okay, now, does 4B, do we need to take action on that B, or is it 1 and 2 that?
I'm sorry, there are two parts to that, yes.
So, the action items will be 1 and 2?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, item 4B1, consideration to accept the 2017 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Small Cities Grant Award 17031, CDBG 17, from the Oklahoma Department of Commerce in the amount of $91,114 for city-owned Market Square improvements at 123 North First Avenue, C-2017-65. And I'll just comment to the audience again, I know, as we consider these actions and these items, we have to be very specific, and that's why I'm boring you with every number and every acronym and whatever, but we have to be very specific for the record on what we're addressing and considering. So, in saying that, Becca, the floor is back to you.
Okay. It is my recommendation request that you accept the grant as funded.
What's council's pleasure?
Okay, so, we're going to do 1 then 2, right? So, move to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Takes us to item 4B2, consideration to approve the Residential Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan relating to the 17031 CDBG 17 project.
This document is a requirement for each CDBG grant, and it states that no persons will be displaced due to the project, and if there were some, that we would follow the guidelines to accommodate anyone that would be displaced.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Becca.
Thank you.
Item 4C, consider recommendation of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group to deny a tort claim. Council has had, are you going to go over that, Cindy? Okay. We have a recommendation from our Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group to deny a tort claim. What's council's pleasure?
Move to deny a tort claim.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes. Is that, I think that's on our property, the tree that fell down on our fence?
I'm not sure. I don't, what's your name, sir?
Thomas Bertrand.
Okay.
We had filed a warrant.
That is correct.
Okay.
And counsel? Did we have any discussion among council members? Help me out on the protocol here.
This is not a matter that calls for public discussion. This is a matter for the council to discuss and vote on.
Mr. Bertrand, I think your conversation would need to be with probably the municipal assurance group, our claims adjuster. Okay?
Already did.
Okay. Any further discussion from council? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Nay.
Councilmember Dill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Move to item 4D, consider approval of request for authorization to purchase RFAP number 2018-071 in the amount of $560,000 for the Larkspur Lane Street Extension. Marty Cook.
Good evening. This is an RFAP for the extension of Larkspur Lane. This is a project that's been on our books that we've known about for going on 10 years now. Development has spurred in the area again, and it's time that we continue with this road. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have. There's a picture, I think, involved in this. Actually, it will be with the next item, but they are associated to extend Larkspur Lane.
And city manager, you may have some comments, but I think this has been an ongoing project, I think, for several years.
You're correct. As Marty Cook had said earlier, the city entered into an agreement back in 2006 as part of the development to extend Larkspur when the additions were developed. The two of them have been to the north of Heritage Crossing, so this is our obligation. We had budgeted for it for this year, and that's simply what we're doing tonight is moving forward on the actual road bid.
Council members have any questions for Marty or city manager? Not entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on 4D? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Item 4E, consider approval of contract C-2017-63 for professional services of Barker and Associates to engineering, design, bidding, and construction administration of the Larkspur Lane Street Extension.
Again, this is related to the project you just approved an RFAP for. It's the same 21 linear foot of roadway headed north, and Barker has been working on the engineering on this already. He's familiar with the project. He is going to provide the professional services to engineer and design and also get the formal bidding process going so we can start construction as soon as possible after the bids are accepted. After we take the formal bids, obviously, you'll accept a bid at a later time for this construction project as well, but this is just to get his services provided for that.
Is he doing the engineering for the development that's going on right now?
Actually, he is. So, he has all that data as well that he can put into the system for drainage and all those kinds of things.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Item 4F, consider approval of request for authorization to purchase, excuse me, RFAP number 2018-072 in the amount of $305,000 for the Carl Albert Pool Rehabilitation Phase One.
All right. Now, another project we've had on our books for a while that we've known about is the pool that we keep getting threatened to have to close every year, and we find ways to keep it open. We have been working with trying to get this pool open again for next year. One of the things that we're going to do is approve the RFAP, and the next item, we're going to talk about the engineering on that one as well. This will be for Phase One, I want to point out, which, if performed currently in the scheduling timeline we have, would actually, should place the pool open for next summer, which is what we're trying to strive for. We'll get to the schedule in a minute, and I'll bring that up a little bit.
We don't want "should."
I can't promise rain and snow, but I'll put in a good word.
I know, I know.
James is really good at controlling the weather.
Attaboy.
I mean, if you saw that last night.
Sign him up.
I think he can help us out.
Marty.
Go ahead.
Marty, who is going to be doing the pool?
The actual labor and the work of it, we don't know yet. Again, this one will have, the next item will be a proposal for the engineer to start taking bids, and we'll have to bid that project out as well. So, we don't have the information on who is actually going to be constructing it yet.
Is this the rehabilitation Phase One similar to what we went over a few months ago?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. We've been talking about this since my arrival here, October of last year. Unfortunately, the liner was given one more season by the Health Department. Myself and the city engineer had a conference call with the folks with the Oklahoma Department of Health in regards to that, and absolutely no way we could have the liner for one more year. We had to make improvements in order to pull out the liner, gunite, fix the drains, fix the valves and the issues that needed to be taken care of, and there was actually, that's going to be Phase One of the project, and we asked if we could split the project into two parts, that being Phase One, and then Phase Two, make all the other improvements for the fiscal year 1819 that require all the ADA requirements and the grades and steps that we need to be able to make sure that the pool is, meets all the ADA. So, originally, when we looked at this, there was several different plans. There was a basic plan, all the way up to a $3 million plan. We're sticking with the basic in order to keep the pool open. We feel it's necessary. If you saw this summer, pool was packed pretty much every single day, and several residents called City Hall and wanted to make sure that this was going to be taken care of. We have found the funding, secured the funding in order to do this, and that's why it's here before you tonight.
Any other questions regarding 4F? It's council's pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Questions?
Everybody that worked on it, great job. I know this has been kind of a hot-button thing, so, great, great, great job.
Good, thank you, Vice Mayor. Clerk will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirby?
Aye.
Councilmember Dill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye, motion carries. Takes us to 4G. Consider approval of contract number C-2017-64 for professional services of wall engineering to engineer, design, bid, and construction administration for Phase One of the Carl Albert Pool Rehabilitation Project.
Again, in speaking of the project we just approved the RFAP for, this is for a proposal for professional services for wall engineering to actually handle the formal bidding process and the construction administration, design and engineering, and they will bring those bids, again, back before council to be approved as they receive those bids in. Then would be appropriate to know who was actually receiving the workload. Brandon is here, if you guys have questions. There's a timeline in the back, there's a project schedule, and if you'll notice, approval of the work order is October the 9th of 17, puts the project complete around May 15th. So, we are really right on schedule for this, and we just wanted to make sure you guys got an opportunity to look at it tonight.
Yes?
Marty, on a project like this, and I know this is probably something new for us, for us a guarantee, how long are we looking on, you know, when we put our money in on this, that it's going to stay there for us? Do we have to do something else again?
And to be honest, Brandon may be a better one to answer that question, if you don't.
It's a good question, Councilman Dill, and Brandon, I think, is prepared to answer that because he shared that those were some of the very concerns in earlier discussions.
Thank you, council mayor. As far as the guarantee on the pool, contractual guarantee on will be one year, but want to talk about the condition of your pool for just a second. When we removed that liner, that what I'd call the skeleton of your pool is in fantastic shape. We didn't find one crack in it that we felt like was a water-seeping crack, so it's in outstanding shape. So, with a good gunite coating, I can't see you having issues with this pool for a long time. We saw really no issues with it that would concern us as far as long-term stability of the pool, but you get a contractual guarantee for a year as far as defects for labor, workmanship, or materials, but then after that, it's kind of up to the coating that's put on there. And, of course, we'll be out there inspecting it along with our pool designers, so do what we can to make sure it's put in correctly and the right materials are specified, but I think you're going to get a really long service life out of your pool based on the condition of what I'd call the skeleton of your pool. We were expecting a whole lot worse when we took the liner out, and it was in excellent condition.
Good news.
Yes, very good news. I was shocked when I saw the condition of it, actually.
Any other questions for Brandon while he's up, or Marty?
I guess this might be more of a question for the city manager. So, with that information and that this would be more of a long-term solution, are we thinking of Phase Three, Phase Four, for improvements beyond that?
I would think so. I think- I would think so. I think after we get the foundation of what we need to do to make it with the health compliance issues, Phase Two being the ADA compliances, I think in the Phase Three, Phase Four, adding some additional features that would be beneficial to the park and a little bit more up-to-date as to what you see in most water parks throughout the region.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I would just add, thank you, staff, city manager, for expediting. I know it's, there is a time crunch. But I've been through one pool closing, and I don't want to go through another. It's not fun. Not fun for the kids. But I appreciate, and on behalf of the council, thank you for working diligently on this. And I'm comfortable that we'll see a pool opening in May of next year. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will record the vote, please.
Council member Hawthorne?
Aye.
Council member Grubie? Council member Deal?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Tomlinson?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Marty. Let me have you still up there, don't we?
I'm back.
Okay. We move to item number five under public hearings. Five A. Consider ordinance number 1834-A, no, I'm sorry. Number 1834. A request for rezoning from A1 agricultural to R1 single-family residential for property located south of US 70 bypass and on the west side of Cemetery Road. Marty?
Once again, thank you for having me. So back in August, HP Holdings filed this application for request of approval of rezoning for this plot of land. The zoning request does meet all the requirements of the City Durant Zoning Code, and the Community Development Office has not received any letters pertaining to this rezoning. We did have a couple people comment in the Planning Commission hearing case. Mostly had questions about what the intents were and what the plans were. And we'll cover some of that, I'm sure. Planning Commission heard this case on September 19th and voted to recommend approval with a 4-1 vote. I will point out that this property, and if you're having trouble picturing where this is located, we include our zoning maps with every rezoning. But I have included an extra map on this one right in between your zoning maps so that it would show a blown-out picture of where this is located, if you're unfamiliar. You have to access from the Rodeo Road side of Cemetery Road. Remember, Cemetery got cut off by the bypass. So this will be a dead end at the north end of Cemetery Road from Rodeo Road. I would be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
And I did have some difficulty, and I can't even get it on the, work on the computer right now. But it lies north of Rodeo Road, right?
Can I point it out to you on my map?
Do you know what their intentions are?
Single-family homes. Yeah. All R1. Actually, it'll be larger lots as well. There's not sanitary sewer available. So they're looking at half-acre lots or larger based on DEQ regulations.
Marty, will the access, one of the access be the, I call it the Humpback Bridge?
Well, Rodeo Road has access through the Humpback Bridge on Ninth, and they also have access to Highway 78 on the east side. So yeah, that's the only two accesses to Rodeo Road, and then Cemetery comes off of Rodeo. So either one or the other, of course. There is no plan for access to the bypass or across the bypass, obviously. This would have to come out on our city streets.
So the obvious question, the drainage issue. Is there any drainage issues in this?
You know, nothing I've heard of. There's a creek that runs kind of through the area. I've talked to some of the neighbors about. They want to make sure, too, and they brought that up as well. Everybody, you know, drainage is always a hot topic. So we would want to make sure. Now, there will be engineering, like any other subdivision, theoretically should contain that to what it is already. Again, these are larger lots with single-family homes. I wouldn't expect a huge amount mass. There's going to be quite a bit of land that'll still be available for absorption as well, so.
And are they going to be on our sewer system? Are they going to be aerobic?
There is no sanitary sewer available, so they'll have to be aerobic or septic, which means the bigger lots, again.
I know the one question that I was sent was that they were concerned about the corner of Cemetery and Rodeo Road being, I guess, traffic accidents a lot there. Is there anything we can do to help that? Is there, can we change the speed limit?
Obviously, when you have a road that is sparsely occupied, it probably doesn't direct and receive as much attention as a road that's highly occupied, right? So this road is kind of forgotten, especially since the bypass has happened. It is gravelly. I've been out there in the meantime to check it out. It's pretty narrow. We, I'm sure we would end up improving this road. The more people you put on it, the more you have to improve it, anyway. We don't have a account or budgeted factor for road improvement or a brand-new road. I will admit that. But as with population growth and movement, roads tend to come up as well. It should be a road that is wide enough to expand, especially in the corner, maybe if we wanted to turn lane or something. That's something we'll have to address. Obviously, we also wouldn't want to do that before the project necessarily because it might deteriorate the road just having the trucks and all that over it, so. Good questions.
Their big thing was just, are we going to put some emphasis on that area if we move potentially 200 people out there, 200 families out there?
I think anytime we have an area developed over what it used to be, we have to have that in mind. And as the police recognize accidents, they'll take that into account. The street department will take into account lane widths and those things, so. That's the burden of growth, is that you have to improve your infrastructure as you go, you know?
I think I read, too, Marty, the, of course, I think it's what's expected, but the streets within the development will be up to city code.
Oh, absolutely. They will be the best streets on that side of the bypass. They will also have, obviously, they're bringing in water with fire suppression, fire hydrants, those kinds of things. So it's going to be increasing some flow in that area, which will be good for the other neighbors in that area to have fire hydrants closer to their houses as well, so. The owners are here, and you might have people in the crowd, so if you want to open it up to...
Mayor, I've got one question. How big is that parcel, if you know?
160 acres? I couldn't remember the exact.
Okay, and I think I'll... What I think is in order this time is to go, this is under the public hearing portion of the agenda. And if there's anyone in the audience, understand the owners are here. But if there's anyone in the audience that has questions, concerns, in favor of, in opposition to, this will be your time to voice those questions or concerns. Alan, did you? I think Councilman Deals might have a question, but can you address that, Mike? Maybe define your project just a little bit for the council.
Basically, what Marty described. They'll have to be half-acre to be for the city sewer. We're going to restrict it, so they're going to be nice brick homes. And they'll have pretty good restrictions, like we've got a couple going out of town. City water is there. It will be, just DEQ septic will be approved. And all underground electric, concrete curb and gutter streets. And they'll go from half-acre up to an acre, or a little more than an acre. And we'll probably have, so there will be more entrances. We're looking at, hopefully, if this gets approved on the plating, but there'll be four to five entrances. So plenty of entrances and exit out of the project, you know, where everybody's not coming out of one spot to try to get onto Cemetery Road.
I know one of the questions, though, I read, it was they asked about the fire department, police department, if they would have services.
Yeah, with it being in the city, which that's more for Marty, but we'll actually, all of our turn lanes, radiuses and everything will have to meet the city's codes for the fire departments to get through there. And then the fire plugs will be engineered, like for every 500 foot or whatever. So all of that will have to meet all the specs once we plat it, just for the fire trucks to get in and around and to do all that, too. It should, overall, help the values of the property for the what-size house and what we're putting out there from what's out there, you know, property values. It should be good for the surrounding area.
Marty, this will be a question for you. I didn't realize it was city water. I guess we have the capacity to add 200 more homes, no problem. I know we've added a lot lately, just it's not going to affect any current homeowners.
We've not heard anything on the lack of capacity at this time.
Okay.
And I think you just said it, too, Alan. This is a request for rezoning. They'll be coming back with the plating
Absolutely.
for approval. It's in the, with the engineering and all these things being addressed at a later time.
Absolutely. We will, this is a multi-stage process. This is just the very first step. You will see the plat and have an opportunity to approve that plat before he moves on to any dirt work at all.
Anyone else in the audience have any questions or concerns? Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience? We'll close the public hearing portion. Counsel, have any further questions for Marty? Let's see, we have a section one and a section two.
Yes, two sections.
It's council's pleasure on the ordinance 1834 request.
I move that we approve.
Motion and a second. That'd be for section one. I'm not looking, is there just, is there a section one?
Yes, section one, section two.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will record the vote, please.
Council member Hawthorne?
Aye.
Council member Grubie?
Aye.
Council member Deal?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hitchcock?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Entertain a motion for the emergency section.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Move to item four B, I'm sorry, five B. Consideration ordinance number 1836. A request for rezoning from General Residential to Highway Commercial for property located at 3509 West Arkansas. Marty?
All right. So in September, Ms. Susan Chalk filed an application requesting approval of rezoning from General Residential R3 to the Highway Commercial and Commercial Recreational C2 District for property at 3509 West Arkansas. This zoning request meets all the requirements of the zoning code. The Community Development Office has not received any letters pertaining to this request. Planning Commission heard this case on October 3rd and voted to recommend approval with a 5-0 vote. I will apologize, the zoning map, for some reason, on this one came out black and white. So I have handouts. Technology's wonderful until it quits. So for whatever reason, we scanned that in, it turned out black and white. The zoning map you'll notice in your hand shows the property located in between a commercial two-zoned piece of property and an industrial piece of property. It's in an area that is generally commercial, relatively speaking. And for whatever reason, we discovered after they purchased the property to use it for commercial business that it was in the wrong zone. It was R3. It's going to be Texoma engraving. Commercial property shouldn't have a high volume of traffic, does not require a lot of parking places, just a good facility for them to have visibility. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
If that's where I think it is, there's really already a commercial building there, isn't there?
Absolutely. It used to be a daycare. It's the little red building in the middle there that used to be a daycare. They, again, they bought it assuming it was commercial. And the thing is, daycares can go in residential three zones. So it could have been a daycare and been in the R3 zone for 10 years, and nobody would have ever paid attention. But the moment we tried to put a commercial business in, we recognized the deficiency.
Any questions for Marty from council?
Marty, say that again. What's going in?
Texoma engraving.
And they locate it already here in?
Yeah, they're right over here on Evergreen Street right now, by Dicky's Bell Bond. Yeah. They do the shirts and engraving and hats and those kinds of things.
Any other questions from council? Not, we'll recognize the public hearing portion of this. Anyone in the audience have any comments or questions regarding the ordinance 1836 request? Anyone in the audience? Third time, anyone in the audience? Hearing none. Counsel has no more questions for Marty. Entertain a motion.
Move to approve ordinance 1836, section one.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Entertain a motion for section two.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
That brings us to item number six under information items. We actually have items A through O. Are there any of the departmental reports that council members have a specific request to hear? I know we're going to cover some stuff. I see Dwayne shaking his head. Must have known I was going to call on him. I know we're going to have the Airport Authority meeting portion later. And would it probably be more appropriate for Dwayne to report then versus now? Okay. Dwayne, if you do it now, you can go on. If you don't do it now, you'll have to wait around.
Council Mayor. Year-to-date, we've pushed 26,407 gallons of 100 low-led gasoline. And for the month of September, we did 3,928. And for the jet fuel, year-to-date, 88,015. It's for September, 9,906, which is a little less, but, you know, we had the hurricanes and all, and our fuels went up considerably. But hopefully, they'll go back down soon. Hangar rent or hangar occupancy were still 100%. I need some more. I don't know that. To secure the community hangar, they've put in the new door on the side. Just, James just got that done. Looks really nice. We'll be getting the new cameras and stuff in there, I assume, within the next month or so. And it's looking good there. Maintenance issues, as far as out on the field, there's none. The AWAS is still partially working. We need some equipment for it. We've been working on trying to get a grant for the new part that's 25, $35,000, something like that. Really, that's about all I got to tell you.
I'm not a pilot, but the AWAS.
Automated Weather Observation Center. Automated Weather Observation System. It sits there and broadcasts the winds, the ceiling, the altimeter, everything you'd want to know about planning. know about planning.
That.
And the solometer portion of it is out, which tells you the ceiling height. So, when you call it by phone, or if you listen to it by radio, you're not gonna get that portion, which we, it needs it, we really do.
Well, and I, I, that helps me understand a little bit, and maybe some of the other council members. You know, if it's critical to our operations and, you know, we've really got a first-class facility out there now. And I think we wanna maintain it as best we can at that level. And I would just comment, continue to work with the city manager and, and Becca, maybe, if there's grants available.
I think Marty's spoken with her, I think.
To, to, to see if we can make some headway in that regard and, and appreciate everything you do, man.
Questions, similarly? Thank you.
Council members have any other department report requests? If not, we'll move, if there are no objections, then we'll move to item number seven, under citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Citizens wishing to address the council regarding matters which are not listed on the agenda are required to sign up no later than five minutes prior to the scheduled starting time of the meeting. A sign-in sheet will contain space for the name, address, phone number, and topic to be discussed. And this way, city staff will be able to follow up on any issues presented if necessary. We have one individual that did sign up and wishes to speak. We, we do have a time limit, and, do we have the clock? And our official time is what, five, four minutes? Mr. Shane Walker from the city, in the city, wishes to address council. Shane, you're on the floor, and please observe our four minutes if you can. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Shane Walker. I live in the city limits of Durant, in Country Estates. I wrote what I was gonna say because I wanted to stay on track, so I would stay under the four minutes. I've been a police officer for 12 years. Over the last couple of years, I've slowly watched the morale of the police department dwindle down to where there's no morale currently. When the morale was up, officers would show up to the events in their off-time, like the Christmas parties and the Bryan County Police Officers Association's picnics. Very few do now, and it's a shame. The city manager was made aware of the issues at the police department when he arrived and continues to do nothing. I served in the Army on active duty, and I'm a veteran of Operation Iraqi Freedom. My morale, six months into the deployment to Iraq, was higher than what it is now. Not only is there no morale, a vote of confidence was taken where over 60 percent of the department had no confidence in the administration. City manager was also made aware of this and only said it was concerning. Something is terribly wrong when your officers have no morale and lost the trust and confidence in the administration. The city manager, knowing all this and not doing anything about it, does not help the morale. The city manager came to Fraternal Order of Police Meeting and was, excuse me, and it was brought to his attention that numerous officers were looking to leave and go other places due to these issues. The city manager's response to this was, we were like trash men, we were replaceable. The city manager also said if his salary was doubled, he would not do a police officer's job. The citizens should know that it takes up to a year to get an officer through all proper training and safely work, to safely work on the streets as a solo officer. It takes an officer up to three years to where he is comfortable working as a solo officer. Having said that, there's at least four officers that could retire at any time, and we are already short four officers. This is not only affecting the safety of officers currently working the streets, but should now be a concern for the citizens. This entire situation bothers me. Four times, I've almost given my life for this city. I've had a gun pressed into my chest with the bad guy digging his thumb into my trigger, trying to get, or my finger trying to get to my trigger. Two of my partners stood face-to-face for 45 minutes in a standoff with a man who had just murdered his family, a family member and their pet. This is just a couple incidences of what officers go through, but examples of why the morale is important. Officers throughout the department are willing to give their lives to protect the citizens of this city and any tourists who may be passing through. That is why it's such a shame that, for this to continue in the direction it is. The police department should be a safe haven for officers where they can go and be able to de-stress. This is not the case of our department. The tension within the police department, it is noticeable just walking in the door. Officers don't like going to the police department for this reason. I am fully aware I may be suspended and possibly terminated after speaking to the council tonight for bringing negativity of the department, which in fact, I'm addressing what negativity the administration has allowed. For that reason, I brought my 10-year-old daughter here tonight. In case I, one of those options do happen, I'm gonna teach her a lesson that no matter what the outcome is, you always do what's right. I hope the city manager and the council will start doing the right thing, and I appreciate y'all's time.
Okay, we ready to do that? If there are no objections from counsel, we'll recess out of regular session, go to the Utilities Authority, conduct that business, and the Airport Authority, conduct that business and come back. Entertained a motion to recess out of regular session.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to recess. Any objections? Hearing none. The clerk will record the vote.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grubie? Aye.
Councilmember Bill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hittson?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye, motion carries. We are recessed out of regular session. Anybody need a break? You gotta change over? Let the record show, it's 7:19. I'll call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Durant City Utilities Authority of October the 10th, 2017, and ask the secretary to call a roll, please.
Here.
Here?
Here.
Here. For the record, all trustees are present. We have a full quorum. First order of business, consent items. Items 1A. What's counsel, or authority's pleasure?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, the secretary will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne? Aye.
Councilmember Grubie? Aye.
Councilmember Bill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hittson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Under item number, item two requires no action. Item three, under Administration Resolution 2017-24, a resolution modifying billing procedures for residential water customers when water usage is estimated. Um, Tim, are you, you gonna go over that? Oh, city attorney, Tom Markham, want to address counsel or the authority regarding this?
Resolution 2017-24 comes largely at the request of trustee Grooby. And, and it does three major things, really two major things, but it has to do with utility bills, water bills that are estimated. And there's been some occasional problems with, with bills that are estimated, primarily that the customer doesn't know that there's an estimate, and, and then on the other end of it, that the estimate is not either an accurate estimate, it's, it's sort of a seemingly random figure, or that it, the estimate is below what the customer is actually paying for. So, when the customer pays their minimum monthly bill, they get up to a certain number of gallons of water for that. And when, if the bill is estimated for two or three months in a row, but their estimate is below that number, when a, a reading is actually taken on a, you know, a, a subsequent month, they may be charged for, for more water than they've actually used. Or they're, or they have used 2,000 gallons a month for three months, but it's only been estimated at 100 gallons. And those may not be actual figures, but those are sort of a, an extreme. And then on the fourth month, when their bill's actually read, if it's read at 8,000 gallons, instead of getting credit for 2,000 gallons for months one, two, and three, they only give them credit for 100 gallons, and then they're paying for that amount above the minimum on that fourth month that they're actually billed for, the meter was actually read. Meter estimates are done for a number of reasons. Sometimes it's, they didn't get to it, sometimes there may be water in the meter box and they couldn't see the meter, the, the meter itself. But this seeks to either bring the estimate to the, the amount that the customer is paying for with their minimum monthly payment, or to an actual estimate of what their bill would be. So, you, you look at the past few actual readings that they have had and estimate it based on that. So, that when you do get a reading, a meter read later, it doesn't have such a high swing one way or the other, because it's been based on an actual estimate. So, that's essentially what it does. It also directs staff, if they can, to minimize the number of estimates that are, that are made, and then to clearly identify on a bill, if your bill is based on an estimated reading. So that if a customer gets that bill, and, and it is based on an estimate, and they feel that that estimate is way off one way or the other, they can request city staff to come back out there and do an actual reading.
I might just comment, authority member, Ms. Grooby, presented this as a solution to some of the issues we've had, as the city attorney referenced, and most likely will resolve some of the issues and the problems we've had, and some of the folks have had with those very estimates, and then that catch-up rate being somewhat out of order. So, on behalf of the authority, I want to thank Ms. Grooby for presenting this solution to the, the authority and for the city attorney and the city manager. And I would suggest and recommend that we follow the city attorney and city manager's recommendation and approve this resolution. Any questions? Entertained a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. I believe it's resolution number 2017-24 for the record. Any further discussion?
Good job. It's a great idea.
Hearing none, the clerk, or hearing, did hear some. Hearing, is there other discussion? Hearing none. The secretary will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grubie? Aye.
Councilmember Bill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hittson?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our next agenda item is information items. Any requests for departmental reports from trustees? Hearing none, entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. The secretary will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grubie? Aye.
Councilmember Bill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hittson?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned out of the Utilities Authority. Let the record show, it is 7:31 and a half. I'll call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Durant Airport Authority of October the 10th, 2017, and ask the secretary to call a roll, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Here.
Councilmember Grubie? Aye.
Councilmember Bill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hittson?
Here.
Here. For the record, all authority members are present. We have a quorum. First order of business, consent items, 1A and B. I'm, I'm gonna ask that we discuss item B. Entertained a motion to approve consent items?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, the secretary will record the vote, please.
Councilmember Hawthorne?
Aye.
Councilmember Grubie? Aye.
Councilmember Bill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hittson?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye, motion carries. Item 2B, request approval to designate the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission to act as an agent of the city of Durant for a project of the rehabilitation and extension of runway 17/35 at the Durant Regional Airport Eaker Field. And Marty, the only, and city manager, the only thing I wanted to comment on is that we have a local individual that sits on the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission, Mr. David Conway. Mr. David Conway is, you know, retired from Southeastern and has a special interest in our community. But in saying that, it's, it was important to him that I, that the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission be of assistance in this, and I, I just wanted to recognize that on his behalf and on the city's behalf to the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission in assisting us in this regard. And Tim, you or Marty, if you have comments to add to that.
You know, to be honest, I've, I've been in the airport business about a week and a half or two weeks, so I'm kinda new. But in that time, I have, had been on the phone with the OAC or the FAA for half of that time, I will promise, along with all the other jobs. The OAC has been fantastic to work for, or to work with. They want this grant as much as we do. This runway extension is gonna be a very big project for the city of Durant, it's gonna put us on the map as far as, as far as airports go in a way that we aren't even yet. And so, it's very important to the OAC to get that to happen, as well as the regional FAA office. They are also 100 percent behind us. And so, when they offer this opportunity to work together and to, to help facilitate this, this runway extension program grant, it, it really means a lot to us. And to be honest, as a guy that's been here for two weeks, it means a lot to me to have their expertise and to be able to learn from that. So, we look forward to working with them. They've been nothing but helpful all the way.
I would echo Mr. Cook's comments. I think Mr. Vic Berg got a hold of us.
Vic Berg, yeah.
A couple of weeks ago. He was very concerned about the pace of what we're at right now with the grant and did not want to have any dropping of the ball, so to speak, and offered their assistance, which is gonna be greatly needed.
You know, for, for what it's worth, the, the appreciation of this authority is, is noted and for the record, and I just wanted to, to bring that up, and we've got folks reaching out to help us, and, and that's, that's always good. Entertained a motion for item 2B.
So moved. Second. I guess, I, I need to say, I moved to approve. I just said so moved. Moved to approve.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, secretary will record the vote, please. Hearing none, secretary will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries, thank you, Marty. Item 3, we have no one signed up. We have nothing under item 4 administration. Dwayne's already given his report. Anything under new business?
There are none, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Secretary will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. The DDA now? Let the record show, it's 7:33. Call to order the regular monthly meeting of the, I'm sorry, the regular quarterly meeting of the Durant Development Authority of October the 10th, 2017, and ask the secretary to call a roll, please.
Here.
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 Here, for the record, all members are present. We have a quorum. First order of business, consent items?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, the secretary will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carries, anything? Nothing under information? Anything under new business? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none, the secretary will record the vote, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Did we adjourn? Sorry. We are adjourned.